This time I would like to call the meeting to order and I will ask Councilman Campbell to lead us in the pleasurable leaders.
Our unbelieved citizens, United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I ask Councilman Campbell to lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we are grateful for all the many gifts that you have given to each of us, and grateful for the work that you have given, and that we have been chosen to lead this city in its direction. We ask you to be with us, open our ears and our hearts, so that we can hear one another, work for the times of this great city. We ask you to bless these United States, keep the men and women of our armed forces close to you, and bring them all home safely.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Umbetta.
Present.
Salgrino.
Present.
Perkins.
Present.
Disconti.
And Cheneese.
Estidito.
Sadi.
Present.
Tavo.
Present.
Beto.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Dix.
Here.
Tyshul. Katsumpis.
Present.
Riley.
Here.
Saraceno. Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Tabrisa.
Here.
There being fifteen present, six absent, let the record reflect that Councilman Esposito and Councilman Disconti are on business. Councilman Tyshulz is still undergoing treatment. Councilman Saraceno has a professional commitment this evening. And Councilman Arshini is on business. Councilman McMahon is also out of town on business. Will the clerk please read the notice of special meeting?
Members of the common council, a special meeting of the common council of Dan- of the city of Danbury will be held on March 19, 2007 at 6:00 PM in the common council chambers at City Hall in South Danbury for the purpose of communication, tentative agreement, police Danbury Police Contract ordinance, please pension revisions for section fourteen point fourteen dash nine, fourteen dash fifty-two, fourteen dash fifty-four, fourteen dash fifty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If the record reflects, the Councilman Shaneesi has just entered, completed with his business. Mr. President. Your Honor, this time I'd like to make a motion that we accept the call for the return to service. Second by Councilman Nagashet. Any discussion about the return of service? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, halls in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, signify by saying nay. I just have the motion carries now as the return of service has been accepted. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. At this time, I would ask any member of the public who wishes to address the council, they have to address the council on items that's on the agenda, and they have to be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury. With that, is there any member of the public who should address the council this evening? Just give your name and address if it would appreciate.
Understanding you are going to ratify the police contract, I have a question as to why section fourteen fifty-two is included in what the council is going to ratify and is not included in the tentative agreement with the union. I stress, fourteen fifty-two subsection C was not approved by the police union. They couldn't vote on it, and they didn't vote on it. As I read it, I caught your attention to the last line in subsection C of the State Department. Last line means same grade and rank of section number eleven act of service of the department. I believe, and I don't know, but I believe the intention of this is to affect the escalation clause of the police officers who already are retired by including same grade and rank to the standard of that, which I stress again, if no one is retired, it should not affect us in any way, shape, or form. There's going to be a grade act which would, I believe, increase the pay by one and a half percent or something like that. We can't accept this mainly, not only for ourselves, but you are affecting widows of police officers who are deceased. Some of them are only getting half of the pension that I am getting. It seems like a truly devious way of affecting a pension by bringing it up at a time when it's something you're not even approving. I can't believe you, Mr. Mayor, would agree to such a thing. I know the police union didn't do it because they didn't vote on it. And I would certainly hope that the council members would not adversely affect the retired police officers and the widows by approving this section. If, I wouldn't propose a problem without a solution. My solution would be, rather than same grade and rank, if you would put same seniority in rank, that would be perfectly acceptable, and it would not affect the pension as no one, I think, wants to. Certainly glad to answer any questions that the council has. I might add that I'm passionately present, right present, and I've negotiated over half the contracts in the last thirty-six years between the city and the police department. Thank you very much.
We will have Ms. Diorio address that in her presentation, but just very briefly, the language that you see in here is a reflection of both the arbitrated agreement that required changes to the pension ordinance from last year, along with the new tentative agreement that was ratified by the union last week. So it's a combination of both. However, I believe, and the director of finance has changed, that this doesn't change any existing language to the current level of benefit to the sixty-seven retirees. And this language is already in effect. It's the same language. So it's certainly not our intention to change any level of benefit for any retiree, and obviously, that's on the record here tonight regarding that. We appreciate your input. Director of Finance will know a little bit more detail when she comes up and addresses this, and I appreciate your question. Any other member of the public who should address the council this evening? Seeing none, then we'll move on with our regular meeting. At this point, with the council's indulgence, I think it would be easiest if the Director of Finance would just do a brief sort of overview of the contract, address the concerns that Mr. Foley brought up, sorry, I suppose the Officer Foley brought up during his remarks, and just give a sense to the council of what the TA encompasses, as well as the work of these changes.
Okay, why don't we just go through the terms of agreement that you have before you, and then we get to the pension sections. When we get to the pension sections, we can talk about the concerns that were just raised. The first page talks about vacation scheduling. As you know, as part of Vision 2009, we are going to have a reduction in the number of captains that will be on our police force. And this language basically allows us to have the same number of people on vacation at any given shift, but we're changing the rank of those that would be allowed to take vacation to take into account that we have more sergeants and fewer captains. So it's just a reallocation of vacation time amongst various. The same thing on the second page having to do with overtime. Because we're deleting two captains, this language, as it affects captains, is no longer applicable. So in terms of filling vacancies that occur, we've actually deleted captains and added the tenants and sergeants in order to fill those overtime slots. The next page, Article sixteen, has to do with wages. This is the impact of the reorganization. What we're doing here is we're giving a one and a half percent, one and a half percent, and two percent increase over three years to take into account the loss of promotional opportunities due to Vision 2009. In order to affect those increases, we are creating new steps for those individuals who are in rank and who are affected by the reorganization. Can I answer questions after, or I can answer them? The next page talks about wages again. This is the general wage increase. And what this does is it extends the current contract to the end of 2008, a three percent increase effective July 1, 2007, a three percent increase effective July 1, 2008, and for July 1, 2009, we've agreed on a floor of two point five percent for negotiating purposes when we go into contract negotiations next time around. The next section talks about vacancy of ranks. Currently, the way the contract reads is that the city has to request an exam within twenty-one days of vacancy for any position that's vacant where we don't have an exam. And post the exam, you have to fill vacancies within sixty days. Because of the civilianization that's going to go on in the police department, we added language here that said, if a position is going to be civilianized, then this language regarding filling of vacancies would no longer apply. Because if we're civilianizing, then obviously, we're not going to fill those positions, and we need language in the contract to clarify that. Okay, Article eighteen, this is one of the pension provisions that we changed. What this does is it changes Article fourteen dash fifty-four, and what it says, if you have twenty-five years of service, if you have last five years of service, you'll get an increase in your multiplier from two percent per year to three percent per year. And this is designed to give us an incentive to get people to stay longer. We want our police officers to stay there for twenty-five years. In addition to that, there's a ten-year lockout on pension changes. So going forward, there'll be no additional pension changes for ten years. The next section talks about disability pension provisions. What we've done here is we've changed the disability pension process to make it a little bit cleaner as we go forward. One of the provisions says that a member is not going to be able to get a disability pension if they refuse reasonable medical treatment. That's an issue that's come up, and we've been able to clarify that. In addition to that, there's a five-year recall provision. So for the five years after you retire, every year, you'll be submitted to a medical exam to determine if you're still disabled. If a doctor decides that your disability has abated, you will be recalled back to work. If you don't accept the recall, then your disability pension will be discontinued, and you can apply for a regular, non-service connected or non-disability pension and lose credit for those years of service that you received the disability pension. So this allows us to make sure that people who really go out are truly disabled and can no longer work as a police officer. Now, with regard to the pension question that came up, I guess I'll address that here. Section fourteen fifty-two, the only provision that changed, has to do with the COLA provision. And the COLA provision was part of our arbitration award that we received last March. The language that the gentleman referred to is the existing language that currently exists in the pension plan. There was no change to any of that language.
I'll go to our ordinance book right now. I'll find that language.
Exactly. So I'm not sure where that confusion is coming in, but there were no changes made to that particular provision in the pension margins.
The intention is that no widow will receive any less than they're receiving now?
They'll still continue to get the same increase that they would have got, that everybody else would get. The only thing that they're not going to get is the increase that everybody else is getting due to the reorganization, one and a half, one and a half, and two. Retirees are not going to be eligible for that, but they will be eligible for every other general wage increase that they've always gotten. So there's no change in that COLA provision for retirees. The next change is Article twenty-two, the car minimum provisions. Currently, we have seven, nine, seven as our car patrol minimums. With one week within signing of the agreement, our car patrol minimums will go to eight, ten, seven. Upon full civilianization of call-taking and dispatch, it'll go to eleven, thirteen, and nine. And upon reaching the full patrol strength of one hundred and six police officers, we'll be at eleven, fourteen, and ten. And this is a reflection of Vision 2009, and where the chief thinks that we need to be in terms of police officers. Article twenty-three talks about job descriptions. We've agreed with the union that we are going to revise all the existing job descriptions to more accurately reflect the changes made in rank as a result of Vision 2009. And we're also going to develop functional job descriptions that'll be far more detailed about what these positions mean. And this is going to be done as part of the accreditation process that the department is currently going through. And the union is going to be involved in the development of all the job descriptions. The next question talks about civilian dispatch. And basically, what's going to happen is it's going to be a two-phase transition to civilian dispatch. And the department, as soon as it's practicable, which is probably sometime between now and when the new building is built, the department is going to hire civilian call-takers, who are also going to work on the front desk. And as call-takers are hired and trained, they're going to replace police officers who are currently performing these functions, and those police officers are going to go back on patrol. At that same time, we're going to have a nine-month transition period where there'll always be a civilian and a sworn police officer in the dispatch office. When the nine-month period is over, it'll be fully civilianized. And following implementation, there will be opportunities for police officers to work in dispatch if they choose to. There's going to be no requirement that they fill in if there's civilians that aren't available, or they call in sick. There's not going to be a requirement that they do that, but if they choose to and there's slots available, they will be able to work in the dispatch office. Article twenty-nine is the duration of the contract, as we talked about earlier. The contract will be extended from June 30th, 2009. And then there's also going to be some amendments to the rules and regulations required to accommodate the agreement. We're going to change the titles to say more accurately reflect what's being done out there. So a captain is going to be known as a division commander, and a lieutenant will be known as a ship commander. And that'll be in line with what will be implemented in Vision 2009. Then we're going to have some side letters to accommodate the changes in the organization. One is that the department is going to agree to have a table of organization, and if there's any changes to that TO, they will discuss those with the union. One of the union's concerns was that they didn't want the city to have the right to change the TO in their department. So this gives them the ability to work with the city if there's going to be any changes to the TO. In addition to that, we've agreed that there's always going to be two sworn personnel, most likely the ship commander and a booking officer, in the building at all times. And these two sworn officers will not go towards the minimum annual requirement that I talked about earlier. And if there isn't going to be any changes to having sworn personnel in the building, then the city and the chief will negotiate that or discuss that with the union. Employees currently on promotional list, when we actually made our first change last year, we eliminated two captains' positions, there were two employees that were on the list that would have been promoted. And they were severely impacted by the reorganization because they did lose those promotional opportunities. So what we've done is we've agreed to pay them from the date that they would have been promoted till the signing of the agreement at captain's pay. In addition to that, we're going to let them retire at captain's pay to accommodate the fact that they did, did in fact, lose out on those promotions. Having said that, there may be promotional opportunities in the future when a captain's position opens up, they will have to retake the test, but they would have been promoted had you not gone ahead and made these changes.
Questions for Dina Foley?
Do you know, when they become civilian, civilian dispatch, I've called, when they become civilian dispatch, and it's going to be totally civilian, there will be, will there be a police officer or someone that has the jurisdiction to look over them in the office at the same time? Or will there be, so, but I'm going to ask, or will all be civilianized?
There'll always be a sworn ship commander.
Thank you so much.
Senator Sadi, it's personal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, to the Director of Finance, I have a couple of questions also, probably to the police chief. Start at the end, with regard to the section that Officer Foley had pointed out, fourteen fifty-two, and the mayor's explanation that there is no change here. I'm looking at the two pages, and I'm trying to find, is there any change in language? And if not, why is this even before us?
The change in the language has to do with COLA provision. That's the language that's underneath in all capital letters. That's the change language. And that's the COLA provision that we agreed to with the union in the last contract arbitration. So in order to have all of the pension provisions in the ordinance, we want to include everything so that when we do our pension books and all of that, all the language is in one place.
The reason I ask it that way is because all the other sections before us have underlying language that indicates the actual language changes, where I'm just trying to understand, and I assure you, Mr. Mayor, that the language on these two documents is identical, and what you're saying is this is that which was approved in the arbitration that previously occurred?
You never updated the ordinance.
Okay.
And follow- However, just to get back, that was not Mr. Foley's issue. He was taking a specific sentence, is that correct?
He was taking a specific sentence in the prior paragraph that was not changed.
Wasn't changed.
In subpar, in subsection C, the grade and rank is the same language that was in surprise of the arbitration. If I may follow up, is there anything in the agreement, the tentative agreement, or in any of the proposed ordinance changes that impacts any pension, retirement, or disability formularies because you're changing some numbers somewhere else and it may impact another section of the ordinance, another provision of the contract?
No.
And with regard to the disability, there's one provision you spoke about through the chair, to the Director of Finance, with regard to reasonable medical treatment. Could that be construed as requiring somebody to get an operation, for example? And if they refuse to get an operation but take other rehabilitative therapy, but don't go, let's say, to the max that's recommended by the medical professional, what would happen to them?
Well, what we've done is we've included language in here that would require the pension board to use the same standards that the workers' compensation requires. So there are specific standards in the workers' comp law that talk about what reasonable medical treatment is. And we included that specifically because we didn't want that to be an arbitrary decision. We didn't want the pension board fighting over, you know, well, is it, you know, should he get the surgery, shouldn't he get the surgery? Because we're not doctors, and we're certainly not in a position to make that decision. So that was why the workers' comp standard was included, to make sure that there's a standard that can be followed, and it's not an arbitrary decision.
If I may follow through the chair, to the Director of Finance, where is that standard set out? Is it the state workers' compensation? Is it statute or regulation?
I think it's in regula- I mean, I'd have to find out for sure, but it's, it's standards applied in workers' compensation cases. I don't know if it's in a reg or if it's in statute. I'm not sure where that is, but there is a standard that's applied. Probably in reg, so.
Thank you. Senator Sadi, Mr. Attell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, to the Director of Finance. Dina, in fourteen fifty-five B, subparagraph three, the retiree who accepts recall shall begin years of credit at service provided he or she shall make contributions for those years within the same number of years as the period of disability. I'm sure that references back to someplace else in the agreement, but could you explain to me what the contribution would be?
Well, as you know, police and fire employees make a pension contribution, they do a percentage of their salary towards their pension. So when somebody retires out and is recalled, we would ask that that person, if they're retired one year, we would ask them to make the contribution that they would have owed if they were still employed. So in this case, it would be four and a half percent of your salary for how many years if they were retired.
So if I may, my follow-up would be, you're disabled, your pay's half of what it used to be, is your contribution going to be half of what it used to be also? Does it reflect the lowering of your pay? Or do they still have to, do guys make fifty percent, is he still paying the contribution that he would have had even making a hundred percent?
He would make the contribution so he would be, as if he would have made a hundred percent.
Okay, so-
Because he's going to continue service now, so he's going to accrue more pension credit.
Sure.
Because he's going to get full pension credit for that time, right?
Yeah.
And he's going to come back to work, and he's going to accrue more time, he would be required to make the same contributions if he was working.
But at point in fact, he'd only be making, say, half of what he would normally be making in that time.
But when he comes back to work, he's going to go back to full pay. So we would work with that person, we wouldn't, you know, take it out of more check for that over time.
Okay, so he's, during those, let's say, three years, during those three years of disability, he has to pay X amount of money that he normally would have had he not been disabled, even though he's making less or pro-rated when he comes back and he can pay a little bit of the time to make it up.
Right.
But he will be responsible for the full amount, as if he adopted the service.
Right.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, Director of Finance. Thank you.
Again, just so I really understand, based upon the new agreement and targeting into fourteen dash five-two, the language stays the same, meaning no change either for the retiree and/or spouse regarding adjustments each year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. To the Director of Finance, I have two questions unrelated, so if you can bear with me, please. In section fourteen fifty-five, on the whole concept of disability, if an officer is out on disability and is required to see a doctor to recertify the disability on yearly, or wherever you said, if that officer is called back to duty, if I understand it correctly, refuses to come, there's a period of time he has to report back? And then he would, would he be on the disability at that point? Would he, tell me what happens to him at that point, if he doesn't show?
If he doesn't show, then his disability pension would be discontinued, and he would be put on a regular pension based on the number of years of service he had prior to going out on the disability pension.
Another officer. If he is called back, if I understood your explanation earlier, if he's called back and does indeed show up, but then decides for one reason or another after, say, a week's time that he can no longer function as a full-time officer, what takes place at that point?
He would have to apply for a pension following the normal process.
Okay. Can I get that second question, or should I wait till they have some?
Okay.
Okay. This is unrelated to this. There apparently was a concern among some of the lieutenants that we were notified recently about the pay scale that they would be having. And I understand that during a period of time, the lieutenants were being paid if doing captain's duties at a captain's rate. Can you explain to me what's going to take place under this agreement in the future for these folks?
Under this agreement, the lieutenants would go back to lieutenant's pay. But they would still get the benefit of the salary increases that were given as part of the reorganization.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, Dina. The civilian dispatch position that's being created, I realize there'll be an officer, a sworn officer in the building at all times, but the overtime, if someone, for instance, a vacancy due to illness, a police officer could become a civilian dispatch and it's special assign- what does that mean, special assignment? It's noted as special assignment?
I mean, I think the chief could answer that a little bit better than I can on how special assignments are created.
They have to take special training to become a dispatch, to be qualified to be a dispatcher, that's what the special assignment is.
They would have to take, the identical training that a civilian would have to take to become a-
Yes.
Okay. And that is considered, then, if that police officer is taking that position, is that overtime for that police officer? Considered overtime, Pat?
Would depend on the circumstances, but most likely, yes.
And then, if someone knows that they're going to be out sick for some type of illness, they know they're about two or three months, that position is posted, so any of the officers have a chance to apply for that particular position?
They have the specialized training.
Okay.
On to do it, yes.
Right, thank you, thank you. To Campbell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, Ms. Diorio, just a follow-up on Mr. Rotello's questions, just so that everyone's clear on this. If an officer is, goes out on a disability pension and is out for three years, let's just pick three years as an arbitrary number. If he's recalled, he or she's recalled, if they had twenty, let's say they had twenty-four years in of service at the time they went out on their disability, excuse me- just pick three years as an arbitrary number. If he's recalled, he or she's recalled, if they had twenty, let's say they had twenty-four years in service at the time they went out on their disability, excuse me, came back, if they were to retire after twenty-eight years, they would still get credit for those three years that they were out on a disability pension, correct?
That's correct, if they agreed to, if they agreed to the recall.
Then they would retire out with twenty-eight full years of service.
They would get the full credit for those years if they ran a disability.
So that's why they would be required to pay the hundred percent of the pension contribution for those three years, because they'd be reaping those benefits of those three years. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chason?
Thank you. Through the Chair, I have a question. I have it to-
A question to Dina and then to Chief Baker. On Article eighteen, you stated that there'd be no changes in the pensions prior to July one, two thousand and seven. Can you explain that a little bit more, what that means?
Are you on page eight then? I'm sorry.
Page six.
Are you talking about the April one, two thousand and seventy-eight?
July one, two thousand and seventeen.
Oh, it's the lockout provision.
So that'd be no increases in pension-
No change in any pension provision for ten years. We can't ask for any increased employee contributions, they can't ask for any increased benefits, we can't ask for decrease in benefits, they can't try to get out of one of the contributions.
But they could be changed in ERISA changes.
Sorry, what?
ERISA, the rule that governs pensions.
Or a non-ERISA plan. Municipalities are non-ERISA plans.
And the other question is, what will be the impact of this contract on the current city's budget?
The total cost of the agreement, which includes the two-year extension with the pension changes over a three-year period, is about one point eight million dollars.
Not the fiscal year two thousand and seven?
Seventy-eight, so-
No, no. Just want to make sure we're clear about this. That's over the three, the total lifetime of the contract, not just for next year.
Beginning July one, two thousand and seven.
So that, we divide it by three?
Yeah, I mean, it's one, one and a half, two, and then the, you know, the wages are three, three, and two and a half, so, I mean, I guess theoretically you could divide by three. I mean, the way I have it calculated, it's, just on the wages, it's about four forty-five next year, five fifteen the year after, and six twenty-four the year after that. The pension changes are about two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. But that wouldn't hit ton exvaluation, which wouldn't be until two thousand and eight.
Our last question is for Chief Baker. If this is approved this evening, which I think the public is most likely voting, what will we, what would the average citizen in the city see from the changes in this contract?
Within a week of signing, we'll increase the squad minimum to by one on the day shift and on the quarter-to-twelve shift. That'll be the immediate impact.
What would be the long-term impact? I mean, for the average person in this room this evening, what would they see? Attitude change, what would, I mean, I'm looking for the overall, from your perspective, what would the average citizen see from-
The ultimate objective in the long term is to increase the number of police officers controlling the streets of Danbury. And there's a lot of jobs within the police department that we can turn over to people that aren't sworn and that have been trained to, you know, to the full extent of police officers, get those police officers back out on the street. And that's the long-term goal here, is to increase the number of police officers on the street twenty-four seven.
Follow-up. Given, under the current contract, how many patrol cars, that's the minimum, mapped, and what's out there on giving shift?
It really depends on the number of vacations, the number of sick calls. The only thing I can tell you for sure is the guaranteed contractual minimums. If we fall below them, we have to hire through an overtime process. And that's seven, nine, and seven right now. And like I said, we'll increase that eight, ten, and seven upon signing.
So again, on an ideal world, again, what would you like to see out on a given shift, between the morning shifts?
Ideal world is the ultimate, when we reach a hundred, six police officers, and I don't remember if that is eleven, fourteen, and twelve, or, I don't remember the exact numbers, but that's the ultimate goal, yes.
Which is outlined in vision two thousand and nine.
Right.
That is the Chief's ideal world.
So what we can expect in three years, we'll get an average, three more cars out on patrol?
You'll be guaranteed to have those cars out on patrol. Right now, you're only guaranteed to have seven out on eight to four, you know, nine out on quarter midnight.
If that's a minimum requirement.
Those are minimum requirements. Since, you know, some nights there's twelve, thirteen, you know, really depends on sick call, vacation, the time of the year, training schools that are going on, those types of things, injuries.
Follow-up to you. What's your opinion on this contract as a whole?
I'm sorry?
What's your opinion on this contract? Are you agreeable with this contract? Any concern that you see in here that you still need to address?
No.
Or have quality issues that have been addressed, if you can say?
The contract was a give-and-take process, and I didn't get everything I want, the union didn't get everything they wanted, but we met somewhere in the middle, and I think we have a workable plan. I know that there are people that are not happy with the contract, and we'll do what we can internally to try and remedy those situations. But overall, I think it's a significant change for the department, a historic change for the department, and I think in the long term it'll serve the city well.
Mr. Bell, you have another question?
Thank you, Your Honor. Either through the Police Chief or to Personnel. Chief Baker, do we currently have police officers that would be covered under the sixty-seven pension on duty today?
Yes.
To the Mayor or to Ms. Yorio or Director of Personnel? Just curious, of the sworn membership currently today, the vote was taken last Friday on TA, do you know what the exact numbers were on the vote?
It was one fifteen to twelve, thirteen.
Yes, thirteen. Mr. Riley and then Mr. Otello.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the Chair, Chief Baker, please. Chief Baker, I'm all for the civilian dispatchers. I just wondered, though, the police department being paramilitary, and it seems to me, as looking at the description, very, a little bit as it is, do you think OJT or on-the-job training for these people that would fill this position, will that be enough, you know, in terms of getting acclimated to rank and file, the workings of a paramilitary group as you would? Do you think that it would be workable with just OJT, so to speak? Some of the positions will actually require formal training outside of the job. Call takers or dispatches will have to go through formal training programs that are established by the state. But I think between that and the exposure on the job, I think that we won't have any problem fullyerizing people with paramilitary structure, training command, and who to report to, I don't think that should be an issue. This is, is being done by police departments all over the state of Connecticut, and it's being done successfully. I don't think we'll have any problems here in Danbury. Thank you. So another, was you're saying, Chief, is that there might be times where these dispatchers might be sent out of the city for a particular school or whatever it might be? Yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Otello.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the Chair to the Chief. Could you just explain to me the situation with the lieutenants? I got a letter today, very last minute, and they're saying that they're expected to do the work of a patrol captain without compensation. They're the only group within the department that's got an increase in responsibility while taking a reduction in pay. They talk about a reduction in the opportunity for overtime. And finally, they say, under the new agreement, patrol lieutenants will also have a diminished opportunity for time off, and they talk about the swapping, you know, normally you swap off the lieutenant, but now they've got to add some sergeants to the mix. Is this, is this accurate? Is this an issue that can be fixed, or was this just a consequence of the arbitration or what?
It was a consequence of negotiation. The lieutenants, when we started the negotiation, we removed the captains from the patrol shifts, they received an in-charge differential, essentially received captains' pay. That's the biggest impact for them. And like I said, negotiation was a give-and-take process, and the lieutenants have brought the same concerns to my attention. You know, we're investigating what we can do at our end, but those are concerns that they did raise, and some of them are validated.
Is it something you think you can work out?
We're going to try. I mean, we're going to have to depend heavily upon the lieutenants, because they're going to be key players in making this plan work sometime.
Thank you.
Mr. Otello.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the Chair, to the Chief of Police. With regard to the civilianization, I understand that civilian dispatchers and other civilians would have to take certain courses and be certified, I understand your response correctly, before they could engage in dispatch or whatever other duties that civilians may take over within the police department. My concern more is along the lines of background checks, histories, whether job performance criminal or otherwise, and who sets that standard? Is there a uniform state standard, or is that town by town based on the individual's PD's desires?
State sets it for police officers. I believe it's done on a town-by-town basis, you know, with regard to civilian employees. But I think that we will, you know, obstrict standards in terms of bringing civilians into the department, because they will have access to sensitive information, you know, the position of trust, and they'll want nothing but the best in terms of background for those types of people.
I need to follow up, Your Honor. If I understand it correctly, are the standards, or are the standards currently for police officers set by the state, and that's either statute or regulation, the state level? On municipal level, would we need an ordinance? When you speak about putting together standards that would protect the department and make sure that we had people of, you know, veracity, that, would that be done through departmental regulations, or do we need to adopt an ordinance in order to codify these types of standards so that they don't change from time to time?
I think we could do it as part of the accreditation process in terms of our policies and our procedures, our protocols, because we're trying to reduce the writing, just about everything we do is part of this accreditation process. If you'd be more comfortable having it codified in the ordinance, I don't think anybody would object to it, but, you know, to save you the trouble, I think we can codify it perfectly well within our policies and procedures.
Is there anything, through the Chair, within either this contract or any existing ordinance or policies and procedures within the department that would limit our ability as a city and you as a department to impose very strict background check standards on civilian employees coming in? And also, another follow-up question, where would they fall within any other union provisions, whether municipal, union? Where would these employees fall into, with any other union on the city level?
I guess I would defer to Director of Personnel and Finance in terms of where they'd fall in a union. I'm sure they'd want to be a unionized workforce, and I, you know, I don't know regulations or rules that prohibit us from, you know, establishing strict standards to, you know, for civilian employees.
And, Your Honor, just a follow-up, then, either to the Director of Finance, Deputy Director of Personnel, or, just trying to understand the dynamic that will exist between the sworn officers in the department, the city, you know, the executive branch, as well as civilian employees within the department?
It would be very unlikely that they would be part of the police union. It's anticipated that they are going to be unionized, they would be part of our administrative union.
I'm sorry?
Our administrative union.
So when they're hired, they would automatically be part of that union, or would they have to vote to join? And, just trying to understand in the context of the overall plan.
Well, generally, how it works is when we create new positions, we don't really slot them anywhere, and the union will come forward and say they'd want them to be part of the union.
And to the extent that they would get absorbed or join an existing partner within the city, do any of those contracts, that's my concern, would there be provisions there that would inhibit the city from imposing very strict background standards and histories on these people?
No. Because, you know, you're only in a union once you're hired, and the pre-hiring process, we can pretty much run you through any kind of process we want. You only become a union member once you're actually employed.
Well, once these civilian employees would be hired, wouldn't, I'm not saying it would be necessary, but it might be reasonable to periodically check their background, time, you know, or sort of update their background checks. Would that be prevented under any existing union provisions?
It wouldn't be prevented, but they would be treated unlike any other employee in the city of Danbury. We don't do that for anybody. We don't do it for police officers, firemen, directors of finance, so there would have to be a very compelling argument that you'd be able to make to say that they would be treated that way when nobody else is.
I just interject, we, certainly if there was a question about employees' behavior, the Chief could always initiate a general investigation related to whatever the allegation might be, chapter four, four, private disciplinary procedure. But we don't do that for police officers.
I know there is, well, you know, there's a different dynamic in officers, as sworn officers as opposed to civilians who are employees and not sworn, and they'll have a higher standard of fiduciary obligation for that to hold. Issue. So, thank you, thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Stavrosakis, I guess I have a change here.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the Finance Director. In Article seven on vacations, it says that either two sergeants or one sergeant, one lieutenant can be allowed off-duty on vacation at the same time. Can two lieutenants be allowed off-duty on vacation at the same time?
There'd only be lieutenant, one lieutenant on, on any given shift, so you wouldn't ever have a situation where you have two lieutenants. They're going to be the ship commanders, so there's only going to be one lieutenant on each shift, so that you wouldn't have two that would want to take off at the same time.
And on the article on overtime, would a lieutenant ever be serving because of an absence as a shift commander without being compensated for that?
Well, lieutenant would be a shift commander.
On the section sixteen on wages, could you tell me how many police officers or police detective officers would be on step seven, July first? Those with eleven years of service?
I don't know how many of them would have eleven years of service, but I suspect the majority of them, just by looking at the names, who have eleven years of service.
As a follow-up, could you tell me how many sergeant, detective sergeant, lieutenant, detective lieutenants might reach the new step four or beyond the new step four effective July first?
Well, there's seventeen sergeants, and there's three detective sergeants. And how many of those have, I don't know how many years of service all these people have.
And on a follow-up, the vacancy of ranks, are there any current dispatchers who are the rank of lieutenant or sergeant or captain?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Are there any current, currently, we don't have civilian dispatchers.
Correct.
Are any of the dispatchers of the rank of lieutenant, sergeant, or captain?
No, not this way. Just police officers.
And I did have one additional question. In the, the employees who are going to be paid at captain's pay from the specific dates in the agreement until the signing of the contract, has the contract been signed?
No, because you haven't approved it yet.
All right. My question is, what happens after that? Do they revert to their pay as lieutenants? Are they paid as captain from just those two specific dates till the signing?
Correct.
And then they return to lieutenant pay?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Seaberry, at the last-
Very quick, thank you, Your Honor. I guess it's to Dina, no, actually, to Chief. The dispatchers and the people that currently take care of the front desks of the police officers who've been trained in the academy, do you foresee any of these civilian replacements for these positions to have a necessity to go through the academy in any shape or form?
Not at academy, but they'll have to go through the state certification program.
What does that take, please? Here?
By merit, I believe.
Thank you. That will entertain a motion. For Mr. Mekershev?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve in terms of funding for an agreement entitled City of Danbury, Danbury Police Union Local Eight-Nine-One, Council Number Fifteen, AFSC, and AFL-CIO, tentative agreement, impact of police, impact of police department reorganization and extension of current contract in accordance with established requirements of state law.
Okay. Let's continue with Mr. Seaberry's discussion. See, now, now, try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who signify by saying aye.
All who signify by saying aye. Aye, so our motion carries, Dan. Just want to emphasize one more time for the record that the retirees' pension level and the widows, widowers, whatever the case, is not changing at all. That's a problem considering all the different... My then will go to item two. Mr. President?
Your Honor, this time I'd like to make a motion that we refer item number two, the ordinance changes to public hearing.
Seeing no objection, item two has been so ordered. Would that warrant a motion to adjourn? Let the record reflect that Council McMahon has entered the room and has joined us for these votes. Council Saraceno has joined us about six forty-ish or so. Anybody else come in? Six twenty-five for Council Saraceno, six forty for Council McMahon. Anybody else come in after we get started? Are we done, Mr. Sheeney? So, okay. Seeing none on the motion to adjourn?
No.
Executive in favor?
Aye.
All who... Will adjourn.[1414.62]